Okay.
Can you hear mine?
We're gonna call this meeting to order. Can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Lovemore?
Yes.
Okay. Will you rise for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We are going to program reports and presentations, please.
All right. So tonight, we've got a couple of objectives to do regarding the bonds and kind of to take us through where we've been so far and where we're going to meet on the 16th. So in January, the Master Facility Committee made the recommendation to the board for a 612 campus with a renovation at the middle school and an addition of a fieldhouse. So that recommendation was approved by the board on the 31st of January, and that's where we've moved forward. So throughout the summer, Mark and Scott and Rich and I and Nancy have all met with the architects. We've updated all those pricings because the last time we did a price estimate was in 2023. All of those has been updated. They've looked at those again. We had the addition of another member of the GPD family that had worked for the Ohio Facilities Commission that is the one that does all the state building, and he's now working for them. And so we had the benefit of having that expertise as well, so that was a good thing to have that relook at the numbers and kind of give us a good estimate. So in September, I provided the board with enrollment projections, what we're gonna see in enrollment coming into the future, plus what we've seen for the last 10 years. And then in October, we had a final project update number. So that number is 128,200,000 for that project. So that'll be the 612 campus, the addition of the fieldhouse, and then the renovations here at the middle school. So and we've, over the past four or five months, maybe six months, the board had transferred 4.25 million dollars, plus another $2 million coming of additional funds for the middle school renovations to kind of reduce that amount as we've looked at that going along. So that's where we are from a cost standpoint. So architects gave us an update. During this last month, we've had another look at those estimates from our construction attorney to make sure that those are, you know, within the guideline. We've looked at the detail, and we feel comfortable with those numbers as of today. Now, prices could go and increase, things could happen, because this, obviously, if it's approved in May, it won't be built until 2026 in that timeframe. So a lot can happen in that time, so we're looking at estimates. And so in November, we are looking at the financing. How do we finance this project? How do we go about the process of issuing bonds? What are the ramifications, what are the resolutions? And then what is also the purpose of the bond? So we kind of have to get the language down today that we want to see on the levy, on the ballot. So that's gonna be working with Catherine from Bricker. And then in December, you're gonna take a vote. That's our first vote that we'll have for that, one for a special needs vote, and then we'll have a necessity vote, and then we'll send that over to the auditor. So I'm gonna turn this over to Catherine Schwartz. She's with Bricker Grayden and really our bond attorney that's working with us, and she's gonna go through a lot of great information. So ask questions. This is a good time to ask questions, and we can stop it, start it, whatever we want to do.
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, that would be helpful. There we go. Catherine Schwartz, again, please stop me at any time. I've got, I'm gonna just go through a couple of slides, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Heather, who's gonna, who's the municipal advisor for the district, who's gonna talk about the financing and the different options, which we need to decide upon to make a decision about the interest rate that we're gonna put into the, into the bond legislation. Okay. So here, I think, here, no, that seems to, I'm not sure what is, I don't know why HDMI is up there, but that is, that is the right slide.
Okay.
So that's, that's good. I'm not sure, I don't think I'm doing that.
No, you're not. Scott, what are you doing?
Okay. So Karen has walked you through what got us to today, and that was a great back, background. What I'm gonna talk about is what we need to do from now until, to get on the May ballot. And we had a couple of deadlines. We're, we're working for May 6th, 2025. The good news about the May election is that most primary elections in odd-numbered years are special elections, and oftentimes you, the district, would need to bear the total cost of that election. The state plans to go on the ballot as well, and they have an issue that's not asking for money, so that's, that's also helpful. But because they have an issue on the ballot, they will at least split the cost of this, of the election with you. And closer to the time, you can ask the Board of Elections about that. So state consents, because we are asking for an amount that is more than 9% of your assessed valuation, we need to ask, we need to get state, we need to get special needs status. And that special needs status looks at, at the estimate of the assessed valuation in the future, and you can, you can borrow up to 12%. So we can, this 128.2 is gonna fit within that. It's just a couple of extra procedural steps. You'll need to approve legislation requesting special needs. And then, and part one, the part, there is an application that we're gonna be guiding you through that is due on January 6th. So that's why you need to have this approval of the resolution at your next meeting, because your first meeting in January is scheduled for January 13th. So then we have, we're gonna also approve the bond legislation on the 16th, and that, the first part, it's a two-part process. The first part is going to be asking the county auditor to certify what the millage rate is going to be. We need to have three pieces of information to give to the county auditor. We need the dollar amount. We finalize the dollar amount, which I believe is 128.2. We need the interest rate, which is what Heather is gonna talk about, and we also need to know the maximum maturity of the bonds. And we have done some analysis, working with your architect, who has provided information. Now, generally, you could go up to 40 years is your maximum maturity if you're just building, but you have to subtract from that any furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, and paving, and sort of shorter-lived assets. And I've estimated that your maximum maturity is 38 years. So we can go up to 38 years. You could choose to go less. Most, most times, you wanna go the maximum allowable. So those are the information, that's the information the county auditor will take, and then we'll determine your millage amount. Once you get that information, at the January meeting, you'll come back and you'll do a resolution to proceed, saying, we know how much, we know what this information is, we still want to go forward. Your deadline to submit everything is gonna be January 28th, not February 5th, because you're special needs. So outline this process that you'll file with the board by January 28th, then we will have to look at the ballot proofs, do a few things, but generally, you should be on the ballot. My, you know, if you, my recommendation is as soon as possible after January 13th to deliver the whole package to the Board of Elections and ask, just verify with them that they have everything that they need. There is a lot of scrutiny over everything, just to make sure that you have it right, and to, if you can ask them, verify, make sure you have everything is, is always the best course of action. Try and get that ballot form back as soon as possible. And then you'll be on the ballot on May 6th. So these are the four items that we want to finalize, and the piece that I wanted to talk through with you a little bit is the purpose clause. Now, your purpose clause, this is the language that is going to be on the ballot, and it needs to be in the resolution of necessity and in the special needs resolution. So we need to finalize this prior to your meeting on Monday. Now, you can, you need to describe the project. You can be, you can be very general. There's no requirement that you get very specific. We generally would not recommend that you go hyper, you know, that you go hyper-specific, because things do change. There are districts that may want to mention middle school, you know, you may want, you may, it may be helpful to, to folks on the ballot to have on, to have in this language, you know, the construction of a, of a high school renovation, or construction of a 612, renovation of a middle school. However, if anything changes, your enrollment changes, and you end up building a 5, something happens, you really don't wanna be splitting hairs as to whether you can still do the project. What we generally recommend is that you go as general as possible on your ballot language, and then in terms of information that you put out to the community, that your plans are to, to build a 612. You can provide information to the community that is factual. So you can provide that information, but not necessarily go, go hyper, unless you think there's some extenuating circumstances why it should be there. So here's a very general purpose clause that I've, I've put together. So constructing, renovating, expanding, and improving school facilities. That covers the gamut, and that is what you are planning to do, right? Furnishing and equipping the same. Now, what I have in brackets, because this is something that sometimes is helpful and sometimes is not, is if you want to mention the fieldhouse, including a fieldhouse for school and community use, and again, whatever you say here has to be your plan, and, and you'll be sort of limited, so you, you don't wanna, you wanna make sure that you're, you're being inclusive. You could obviously have a school, a fieldhouse for school and community use fits, fits in there. You can, fits in the first part without the brackets. You can definitely finance the fieldhouse that is school facilities. So you don't need it. If you want to call it out, you can. If you think it's helpful, we can definitely put it, put that in there, and improving the sites thereof. We don't need to mention anything about acquiring real estate, because you have all the real estate. The other reason why you, you be, you want to be pretty general is it has happened in the past. It's not happening as often these days, I will admit, but if you have an excess of funds from this bond issue, you wanna, you wanna make sure that you can, you can use it for your school facilities, for, in this, you know, this type of a, a purpose. So this is what I wanted to talk through with you, see if you had thoughts, if there's anything, if there's anything you want to add, anything you want to subtract, and your thought about the bracketed language.
I have two questions. Well, one statement, one question. I think, my opinion is that the fieldhouse should be in there for the language. I think that that's an important piece to advertise to the community that it exists.
Do you think it's beneficial?
I do.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we're fairly suburban out here. There's not a lot of options for people, and knowing that there's a central place where the community could use it, I think it's gonna...
Well, the fieldhouse has been, been very prominent, and, and was something...
And it was important in the work that we did.
...that the community and, and our, all of our meetings emphasize.
Right. So I, yes. So I think it's important that, that that language goes in there, but if we are planning to raise a building, is that...
Oh, demolition?
Yeah.
Um, we don't, you don't actually need to say demolition.
Okay.
We, we, we typically don't actually put that word in there. It's all, it, it is...
It's encompassing?
It is encompassing, yes.
Okay.
Um, and most, many, many of our, all of our, almost all of our construction projects are gonna, are gonna involve some sort of demolition.
Okay.
Has this kind of language been, in general, successful?
You know, there's not a, there's not a good, I don't, I don't think there's magic language. I mean, there's, there, to say this will help or not, I mean, the, the, I'm looking more at the legal side of it. I mean, and, and I can, it's also very community-specific. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to sway you one way or another, but there are times, there are districts where, you know, where someone could read the word, say, stadium, and somebody might vote for the bond issue because they want a stadium. Somebody might also vote against the bond issue because they think their stadium is fine, you know? So, so it's really, it's very hyper-specific in a community. And I think the reason why I put fieldhouse separately is, why I called it out, was because, not, not for any other reason than the, you know, school facilities, sometimes you don't immediately think about a fieldhouse as being school facilities, whereas, obviously, your, your 612 building, that's clearly school facilities, right? It is encompassed, that is, is there, but, you know, it's, it's just, it's part of your project that is unique. There's no, you know, this is, you know, this is, there's no, you know, magic to this. It's, it just comes down to sort of preference, and, and instead of us just coming up, we don't know your community, instead of us coming up with, with something and just, you know, putting into the resolution, I wanted to make sure you had input.
And I think one of the things that we were concerned about, or the committee was concerned about, is as we demolished, you know, a building, we lost a gymnasium. So each time, you know, if the high school, you know, obviously, when we build a 6, you know, 612 building, we're replacing those gymnasiums, but at the elementary school level, we would have to add those, and that's kind of what led a lot of people to a fieldhouse.
Right.
As I'm looking at this, fieldhouse, do you, I mean, I think it could go either way. Fieldhouse, one word or two? Do you have a preference? I mean, now we're really splitting hairs, but I wanted to, to look at how...
Two.
It is two words, okay.
Is our local grammatician...
Right.
Okay, perfect. I appreciate that. I'm, I, I did use two, and then I'm like, I wonder if it, if it should be one.
We've been, we've been using the term fieldhouse sort of all along.
We have been, yes.
I'm just, as I was looking at that, I was wondering if that's a good word or good two words for what this facility would be, or if there was something else. But because we've been using those words, that's probably...
Consistency.
Needs to be consistent.
And, and there's 100%, you're gonna have community use of the fieldhouse? I mean, we don't have to go in and describe that on the ballot, but again, this has to be intent, so that's why I just want to verify.
There, there are several. I just Googled.
There are several, several, it could be...
It's both one word, and I mean, the Rocket Mortgage Fieldhouse is one word, and the Fieldhouse at Studio West, and then it says, why is a gym called a fieldhouse?
With two words. If you're using fieldhouses two words, I, I, I appreciate that. It's, I guess it could, could go both ways. We just want to be...
Most of us is saying one word. All right, go and see. It says fieldhouse or fieldhouse, one word, is an American English term for any indoor sports, it's either one.
I'm not recommending that we do this, but I'm just throwing it out there for a thought. I know that some of the musical elements in our community are tired of sitting on the bleachers in the gym and on those little wooden chairs in the middle school gymnasium. Should there be mention of an auditorium, or should there not be in this? I know it's included in school facilities, but a fieldhouse could also be. Just a thought for you to ponder.
That's a good question.
I was wondering that, too.
Yeah.
Auditorium.
Because we don't have one now, we have a very small, you know, we have a stage in the gymnasium in the middle school. And I know that, I know that some of our band students and choral students and their families would certainly appreciate, I think that would be one of the reasons why they might be interested in expanded facilities.
Would it be accurate to say a fieldhouse and auditorium for school and community use?
I think you could say both, yes.
I think that's a good idea.
Yes, I think that would be fair.
Yes.
That's because it's also something that we talked about during our, during our facility planning.
You want the auditorium. I mean, this is, this is where we need to make sure, you know, we, we can be as specific, we could put the auditorium first, auditorium and fieldhouse.
Is that what she said? Auditorium first?
That was her voice, not mine, but, yeah. Came from this end.
Um...
It's in alphabetical order.
Well, we gotta hash that out.
Well, we need to hash it out now.
No, that's what we're doing now.
No, we gotta decide.
Well, yeah, I like the idea of alphabetical order. It's nice and orderly that way, but I mean, I'm not committed to that long-term.
Well, this is long-term.
Well, but I'm saying, if the two of you want to flip it, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And, and just to be, you know, ideally, we'll have an answer. I mean, if something, you know, if you, if somebody comes into the meeting on Monday, we will have a resolution that we're gonna propose with the language that you've decided upon. If something happens, you can change it. There's just, you know, we'd have to go through the, she'd have, Karen would have to go through the resolution or, or make note of it and, and approve it as it is. It can be done. I once had, I think, a 45-minute discussion about whether we should have the words, you know, like, something related to central air in, on the ballot or not. I mean, I think there, it lasted at least 45 minutes on the day that they were approving it, and we had to get the language perfect and then, you know, approve it. It can be done, but it's just, it's ideal to have it done in advance, so there's no, no question.
For sure.
Regardless of the order, I liked the fact that you put both auditorium and fieldhouse for school and community use. I think that's important.
Yes, I agree.
That sequencing's important.
Yeah, I don't, I don't care what the order is.
I suggest an auditorium and fieldhouse then.
Okay.
Yep. I mean, alphabetically, it works.
Right.
Yep.
Yep. Does that make sense for you?
It does, and I think, again, we're, you know, if anyone asks, why are you not putting, you know, K-12, I mean, that, if anyone asks, the question is, you want to be as general as, as possible, you're calling these two things out because they are somewhat, you know, unique, or they're, they're somewhat unique to the project, and some might not immediately think of them as school facilities.
And if people aren't familiar with our schools, they might not realize that we don't have an auditorium, because that's an assumption. Most, most schools today of a significant size have auditoriums.
And I, you know, again, when you put out, we'll talk about this a little bit more, but when you put out information into the community, you know, that, that is, that is a statement that you can, you can share with the community, that the, the plans include an auditorium, which the school district does not currently have.
Can we give the purpose clause?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll make that happen.
We're gonna turn it over to Heather. Arling?
That didn't even take 45 minutes.
Well, there's still time.
There's still time.
Oh, thanks.
Alrighty. Again, Heather Arling, Heather Meyer-Arling, I'm going back to Meyer soon. Heather Meyer-Arling with Bradley Payne, Municipal Advisor to the District. We're gonna talk about some funding options. All right. We're gonna talk the bond issue option, the USDA option. We're kind of calling it a blended option, because USDA can only go to a certain amount. Talk about costs, and then a summary with pros and cons of each. One more. Thanks. Thank you. Okay. So if you would choose the bond issue route, I have up here a lot of the, oh, thanks. The options here, let me see if that, oh, right. That forward button, there we, oh! Sorry, everybody. It got a little click happy. Need to go back one. It's not going back one. There we go. Okay. Up here, I have listed all the participants. First and foremost and most important is the issuer, which is the school district. We'll be selecting the financing team, which Karen has got mostly in place with bond counsel and myself, and an underwriter, and potentially USDA for the funding portion. Then we'll determine the borrowing needs, which you all have already done, and then from there, authorizes the issuance of the debt, which is what we're talking about today, and you'll be doing on the 16th. The underwriter, which gives us access to the investors, and the investors then pay for the bonds that they purchase, and then those funds at closing come to the district in order to continue with the project. Municipal advisor, which is myself, I have the fiduciary responsibility to the district to ensure the lowest cost of funds. We also work from the beginning and put a schedule out for everybody to review, which is post-election, and it's responsibility is everybody for every single step getting to the closing where the school receives the funds. We also review all of the, the documents that go out to investors, and then on pricing day, which is, to me, most important, we help with the rating presentation, and the most important is pricing day. Pricing day is when you go to, you know, purchase the car, purchase the house. It's where the rates are set. So we get together with the underwriter. Underwriter is putting out all the information to investors and potential investors, and it's like an auction that you go to. The more investors you have interested, the lower you can make the, the yields, I was using jargon, the rates. We want the lowest rates possible. So we work with the underwriter. It's an art and a science to go out to, it is, to go out to the market to offer the bonds, and then we want the most investors interested. And the underwriter will also pre-market it a couple weeks leading up to it and talk to investors and answer questions about the district or the structure of the bond issue. Then we're involved until the end, which is the closing. Also included is bond counsel, which is Bricker and Eckler, or sorry, Bricker-Greyden. There was a merger recently, my apologies. Underwriters' Council, sometimes Underwriters' Council is involved, and they represent the underwriter. Rating Agency, which I mentioned, it's either S&amp;P or Moody's, and we do a presentation to them that takes about an hour, and they ask questions, and we provide a lot of documents to them, and then they come back with a rating, which is just like our own personal credit score. The higher the rating, the lower the rates, just like it is for a personal credit score. Then we have the paying agent, which will take the funds from the district for the semi-annual payments and give them to the bondholders, so the bondholders get paid. Any questions there? Thank you. All right. And this is post-election, what that looks like. I think we went over this a while ago, maybe about a year ago, but wanted to revisit it since we're getting closer. So start to finish, about 10 weeks, and what we'll start with here is, again, engaging the financing team. We usually meet right after the bond issue passes, and I come with a preliminary schedule. Everybody walks through all the facts, makes sure we all have everything in place, and everyone's responsibilities are laid out, and we haven't missed a step. We get that finalized, identify the sources, which we already, will already know, this is from a UTGO bond issue. Information is starting to be gathered by the Bricker-Greyden Group, a lot from the county auditor and from financial statements from the district, to get the preliminary official statement together, which if you've ever bought stocks, bonds, mutual funds, you get a prospectus. The thing that everyone reads to get themselves to go to sleep at night from front to back. It's called a preliminary official statement. It's the exact same information, a lot of information about the bonds themselves, and then also about the district, and a lot of focus on the financials. So Karen will be helping a lot with that as well. All of us kind of come together and work on it and review it. Next, it'll be, I already went through that, the rating agency that I talked about. It's about an hour-long conversation with the rating agency. Usually, the treasurer and superintendent are involved in that, as well as myself, Catherine, and, and underwriter. And they take about a week to review everything. They go to a committee of senior analysts. The analysts that we talked with will review all of the information. We put a nice presentation together, which they use during their committee meeting, answer any questions, and write up a, a press release and a full report on the district. So instead of our credit report with all of our payments and all of that, it is written words and charts about the district. It's very in-depth. After that, you all have already approved all the bond legislation. We sit down, go to pricing. Sometimes we go to the underwriters' office, so we're in front of all of their traders. I just think it helps them focus on the district's bonds that day of pricing versus any other bonds they might be selling in the market. Sometimes they're very large underwriters. They're the Wall Street firms, and they have, you know, $250 million New Jersey Turnpike that they're focusing on. We want them to focus on West Yaga. So I've found that pricing day is more important than the rating agency and going to them. I've found that the pricing day is more important to be in front of the underwriter and the traders, so that they know this is what we want you to focus on. We're in the other room, in the conference room. We want you working your butt off to find those investors to help lower the yield. So we found that that works really well. After that, about two weeks later, is the closing, and we, everyone has signed all the documents that need to be signed, usually a week beforehand. Catherine's team will get those documents together. Everyone will sign, and then we get on a call, and the funds are transferred. Any questions there?
As far as the, the rate...
Mm-hmm.
You're going to show us later as predicted rates...
Yes.
And how it would affect payments.
Yes.
But those are clearly estimates now.
Mm-hmm.
And those wouldn't be cast in stone until after week eight.
Until pricing day.
Until pricing day.
Pricing day is when it's set in stone.
So we may think now that it's, you know, 5% interest rate, and it comes to pricing day, and it turns out that it's 4%.
Mm-hmm.
So then that affects all of the...
Millage and everything, payments.
Right. But you've already passed the millage amount.
Mm-hmm. So if you were a voter, would you be, would you prefer the school district going out with So if you were a voter, would you be, would you prefer the school district going out with a five percent and you voting on that millage and it coming in lower? Or would you prefer to have it go at five percent and then when they price the bonds, it's five and a half and your millage is higher? Which would you prefer? I've found that being a little more conservative with the rates on the ballot is better than having to go to voters and saying,
Oops.
"Sorry, millage is going to be a little higher." So I tend to lean a little more conservative on the rates.
Okay.
But it also, I don't want to muddy the waters, but it's a philosophy. We were talking about another school district that may or may not be somewhere around here. That is going on with a lower percentage rate. The philosophy is, you know the millage you want, you make it work and you do, there are some tools you can use. Short-term notes to help manage millage and keep that millage where you want it. So there are some things, capitalize interest the first few years, that you can do to help manage that millage. If you know some bonds are falling off, meaning you have existing debt out there and you know that those are going to be paid off in three years, so there's going to be that millage drop. And so you've built that into your projections and so that lower interest rate to get that lower millage kind of meets that need. So you're being creative with notes or capitalize interest. I know I'm getting a little jargony, but you can do that to help manage the millage the first few years. But there are unique circumstances like that.
So when do you do the optimization of these multiple factors?
Well, that's why we go out a little conservative on the ballot language. And then as we get closer to pricing day, that's when myself and Zach Logan on my team, who's a quantitative analyst, he knows the bond market inside and out and he's working with the underwriter. And they're coming up with that art and science I talked about of what you go to investors for. So you don't want to go out too low and then everyone says, "We don't want those bonds, that's too low. We can get a higher yield over here with the New Jersey turnpike," whatever it might be. And you don't want to go out too high where all of a sudden for each of the thirty-eight maturities, you have fifteen orders and your, you know, hundred-and-twenty-eight-million-dollar bond issue, you received, gosh, you know, two-hundred-plus million, three-hundred million in orders. You don't want that, so it's this, that's why I called it an art and science, there's this fine line you walk in going out. And we kind of believe that you go out a little bit stronger than what underwriters can be comfortable with because they like to get all the orders in and then lower it down. And we think we should go out kind of with our worth and what you think it should be. You get the orders and then you can even go lower. So it's, that's when we finalize it and when we kind of put it together. But right now, we don't have all that information, so that's why it's a conservative rate. Did I go too deep in the, in the meat there?
No. You didn't answer the question that I was trying to ask.
That was my next question to you.
Because I hate to use the word creative financing. But I thought you were saying that there are different ways that we could play this as far as aiming for a percent that we want to have by doing some other kinds of, you said capitalization of the interest and some other such things. So at some point or other, you need to have that discussion and calculation of, well, what else could we do to try and get the interest rate where we want it? Or where it is reasonable to get and where we want it.
So my example with all of that was with the school district that's going out with a, a lower interest rate.
Yeah.
And I just assumed that that's some of the stuff they might be doing and looking at, that was my example.
Right.
And I think they have bond millage dropping, that's why I said that.
But a lot of that you could factor in ahead of time in making your decision. I mean Karen can tell you, we've got this coming off or we've got this we're going to have to put on. We've got these other sources of money that we could use to maybe, I'm going to say buy down the interest rate. Like we'd be paying points on a home mortgage type of thing.
Right. We can't do that, but we have talked about all the different options, which is why we looked at USDA.
Right.
And that's in here as well.
Yeah.
So we've gone through a lot of different options and come up with what we think is the best two options that we're presenting today.
One thing to add is, we were talking about a school district, we don't know all the facts about that school district. However, I've worked with other school districts that have used a low interest rate, lower interest rate because they were going through a reevaluation. And so they, the, the county auditor was estimating, they, you have to estimate your, your interest rate based on today. And now we're in twenty-twenty-four, based on today's AP. But if the county auditor is estimating that the assessed valuation is going to go up by twenty-five percent, they're, you know, they're, they're, they can, you can, you can put in a below-market interest rate to try and get you to the millage that you're, that you're, that you think you're going to actually be, be going out with if the bond issue passes. Also, the millage rate is set every year based on, you know, it's not, this is an estimate, we're doing our best guess. But it's not, you're not going to just automatically get a, you know, if you come out with four-point-four-five mils, the county auditor is not going to just levy four-point-four-five mils for thirty-eight years. It's going to come down as, as your assessed valuation goes up, that's going to come down. And it's going to come to the amount that you need once you issue
For your payment, it's the payment amount.
Principal interest, they're going to figure out what is needed for that amount, they're going to, they're going to look at a number of factors. So we're, we are putting our best guess out there, right?
I understand.
That's all we can do, because thirty-eight years is going to change something.
So each year they're going to, they do a new bond millage. So every year we submit information to the county auditor, they come out and they'll give us a new bond millage. And say, "This is your new millage for the bonds."
That's what we've done in the past.
Yeah, and that's what we've done in the past.
When we did the improvements
Right.
over the, it lowered and then we ended up paying it off early too.
Right, yeah.
And then you could not, if you pay it off early, you can, you can, we'd ask the voters, you know, thirty-eight years, but it's possibly you could pay it off on year thirty-six and then the bond millage becomes zero. Nobody is, you know, nobody is asked.
And we did that.
Yeah.
So one of the things, you know, we looked at this in twenty-twenty-three when we were first starting to look at this. And that was before we had our twenty-twenty-three revaluation. So that, we were looking in the sixes, you know, the mils were in the sixes and now they're, you know, we're all up one mil shorter. So that revaluation obviously changes the dynamics of the millage. So, but the county auditor every year will come through and relook at it every year.
It's different than your, than a permanent improvement levy, it's different than another levy where you put a millage amount on. And then that's, it's not quite the same.
And if you want, we can complicate it more with how the county auditor calculates it and how it really comes out. But I won't go down that, that path. No.
Yeah, I think we know that one.
But are we, can I answer your question now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. All right, this is where rates were on November one. This, the gray here shows you where they have been back to nineteen ninety-one. So this here would be your first year's payment, so year one, that would be your first year payment, that's where the rate is. So we're still in somewhat of a Nike swoosh, a normal yield curve is like this, where the average is. But, you know, unfortunately, this is where we are, where the short-term rates are a little bit higher. And then year two, three, and so on. So the gray bar is the historic, the green is where we are. It hasn't changed significantly since November one. And then you have the average, which is, is the orange there. Oh, thanks. Here is what the county auditor, county auditor's millage estimate looks like. So we've mimicked ours to look, everyone in the industry does this, to look exactly like the county auditors and how they do it. So the big points here are the assessed valuation. And then we have, again, this is just for the bonds. We have the four-point-seven-five percent interest rate over thirty-eight years. And then a hundred-and-twenty-eight million, two-hundred thousand. And then we have the total payment of six-point-two per year and then the average of six-point-five, all rounded up. Which brings us to a millage of five-point-two-four. Then down here we did some estimates for a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home. The annual cost is just under five-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year. And then, as everyone usually does, is the, the daily cost of your cup of coffee. And then here we'll go through the USDA loan. The smaller amount of participants here, we would need to add in the underwriter as well because USDA only goes to just shy of a hundred million dollars because their system can only go that high.
Sorry.
I, I
And they pay you in ten-million-dollar increments, so you have ten checks.
You would have two issues, you have a USDA portion, then you have a smaller issue
A bond issue.
Just what she walked through earlier.
The twenty-eight-point-two million. So it'd be two different issues. I will say that I was on a call yesterday with the USDA team with another school district. Their rate right now is three-point-eight-seven-five. And they think it's going to be going up though to four percent. In all my analysis, four percent on USDA was my threshold of breaking even between going to the private market or the public market, excuse me, and going with USDA and a little bit of the, the public market with the two-point-eight, twenty-eight-point-two million. Because of the interest earnings. With USDA, you don't get the funds upfront, so you can invest them and make money. The public market, you get all the funds at closing, like I said, the funds are wired to the district. So Karen can invest those. And I've estimated with kind of a generic construction schedule that the district could earn about five-point-two million dollars in interest. Which can help a lot with overages and things like that. I can't tell you how many districts did their projects, got close to the end and said, "Heather, we need to issue more debt. What can we do?" So that interest earnings really helps a lot, I've found. Thank you. So shorter timeframe, but Karen would be working months before this on an application to USDA. A lot of the other little work has already been done, but the application is what she would need to work on, which is similar information to the preliminary official statement that we talked about earlier with the public market offering. Same things, just a shorter timeframe. Any questions there?
So Karen would be busy doing both of them if you
Yes, it is.
We'll have to do, you know, POA statement and we have to do USDA loan.
Yes, if you did kind of the, the combination of the two, that would be
Whether it's a ten million or a hundred-and-twenty-eight million, it doesn't matter, it's still the same information.
Amount of work, it's a lot of work.
And we have a Moody's rating already, so I would suspect, you know, go with them.
Deal with Moody's, yes, because S and P just redid their methodology and they're matching Moody's now. So here, I already said that USDA's rate's three-point-eight-seven-five and we have the current market for the ballot at four-point-seven-five. It's a little bit lower right now, but again, we want to be conservative in case rates do go up. We don't want to go back to the voters and say, "Sorry, the millage is a little higher." The fees with USDA, which we'll get into, are, are lower. But they're paid out of either the general fund or the project fund, so you have to keep that in mind. Where a public market issue, it's paid through the production, which is called premium. We can get into that another time, but it's just where the market is. You have a significant amount of premium that goes into the bond retirement fund and helps, helps pay debt issuance the next few years. But it also pays for all of the fees. It's kind of like APR, APY when you buy your car. And you, oh, can I go back one more time? USDA, one great thing is that when they lock in your rate, if rates happen to go down before closing, they will adjust it down to that rate. Which I thought would be the direction we're going, except for yesterday when he said he thinks the rates are going up, which was
It can't go up.
It does not go up, once it's locked in, it stays there, it can only potentially go down.
But you could also refinance a USDA loan.
You can refinance a USDA loan at any time, which I'll get into that with the pros and cons. Okay, so the blended issue, we blended the rate to four and a quarter, everything else remaining the same. The four and a quarter is the only thing we have changed. The millage rate is four-point-nine-seven. Any questions there? Okay, costs. So here we broke out all of the fees. On the left there, it's the bond issue in the public market for a hundred-and-twenty-eight-point-two. And then in the second column, we have the hundred million for the USDA and the twenty-eight-point-two of the bond issue. So the bond issue will, oh, I don't want to be in a photo. The bond issue, the premium produced would pay for that, one-point-three in fees. And again, these are just estimates. For example, I think, wait, I think I deleted that, I did. But the underwriters' counsel may not be needed. All of our fees are, these are all estimates. And then for the USDA, it's just shy of six-hundred thousand. And that would come out of either the general fund or the project fund. Any questions there?
But the one-point-three would come out of the bond fund?
Not the bond fund, the, the production, the premium. Because we, right now in today's market and since I've been in the industry, the bondholders, the investors, they want to purchase the bonds at a premium, which is a compliment because they think your bonds are worth a premium. So instead of at par, which is in twenty-twenty-five, let's say we're sale, just keep round numbers, a hundred thousand dollars in payment, they would pay at par a hundred thousand dollars for that specific maturity. They're paying for a premium, they're giving you more than a hundred thousand dollars. So that additional money has to go legally into the bond retirement fund. But we also, industry standard, the way the market is right now, what it's dictating is the cost of issuance, all the fees get paid for by that premium.
My point was that it's coming out of that pot of money rather than out of our general fund.
Yes, or the project fund.
Okay, now what's the project fund?
The project fund is the hundred-and-twenty-eight-point-two.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so here I broke out the pros and cons of each. At first blush, what sticks out to me is that there's more cons on the USDA side, right? I want USDA to be a lot easier, I've talked to them about that. They're pretty much tied with the restrictions that they have. Pros are lower fees, like we talked about, the downward rate adjustment if rates do go down after they lock you in and before closing. You can pay it off at any time, which is nice. And they can do interest only, which is also called capitalized interest for the first two years. In the market, you can do three. The cons are, every time contractor needs to be paid, Karen's filling out a form in order to get that money to pay that contractor. Somewhat tedious. And then, like I said, we'd be working about ninety to a hundred-and-eighty days beforehand on the application, which is a pretty in-depth application. Buy America, Build America Act. It's kind of a stipulation that they have and it can increase material costs. So there's that to think about as well. The other school district I'm working with was able to receive a waiver on that, so we could try that. And then again, the fees are paid for from the general fund or the project fund. Any questions on USDA before I move on to the public market? Okay, so the bonds, the pros are the immediate funding, which then leads to the interest earnings of over five million. More flexibility on the structure. We get to decide what it looks like. We're USDA, here's your, here's your hundred million and here's your rate and that's it. And again, the fees are paid from the premium generated. The cons are the fees are higher and you can't pay it off until seven to eight years. Again, this is a UTGO bond issue. This isn't, you know, a, a water treatment plant where, you know, they raised rates and they have more revenue coming in and they want to pay it off sooner. For a UTGO bond issue for a school district, UTGO is unlimited tax general obligation and that means it's voted bonds. and that means it's voted bonds. There's no reason a school district for a building is going to be paying it off in seven to eight years, right? It's not logical. I have not seen it happen. I've seen about ten years early and that's about it. And that was AV increases and things like that. The reason for that is refunding. If rates go down, you can refinance it, or as we call it in our industry, refunding. You can refund it for a lower rate. So is that really a con? I just wanted to make sure, all cards are on the table there.
So the USDA loan, we would get our funding periodically. So we would submit a request for funding, they would pay that. So each time we would, you know, the contractor would sign off on something, the architects would sign off on something and we'd submit that payment. So that's just how the funding went, that's the form she's talking about. So we would just submit that payment and then we'd be funded. I don't know how long it takes to get that funding.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I just don't know how long that funding takes for the, each application, you know.
What do you think?
For the USDA.
USDA? I'd say within two weeks, but.
Okay. Once it's set up, I mean, they, it just is a process of going in and applying for the payment and then it being transferred to our account. Well, the the rates have changed. So the rates have gone up on the USDA before they were lower. So as we look at the rates, and we don't have to make a decision now, that's why we're going to have the, we're going to ask for the higher interest rate so that we're, have that flexibility and then we'll make that decision as we get closer. Can we have to decide on this tonight? We're gonna, we'd like, we're gonna vote on it Monday. Tonight is just the rate proposed millage that you've seen, which is the higher one, the worst-case scenario, I guess.
That is all I have. Oh, don't look at the photo up there. But any additional questions regarding funding options?
Can you go back to the two charts? You pointed out what the yearly cost was with the bonds. For a three hundred thousand dollar house, what was it for the USDA or the?
There we go.
One, and how do they compare?
Five hundred and twenty-one dollars and the other was five forty-nine. Yes, five forty-nine.
So.
Can you set up the way to buy America? How hard is that process? Because I know in construction, there are some big issues right now, we're talking about supply. Here, stupid things like toilets and things like that. So how hard is that process?
It wasn't hard for the other district. But I will say that the USDA folks were a little surprised that they got it waived. The process wasn't hard. It's getting, the process isn't hard getting, submitting the paperwork, it's getting approved and giving them all the information you can to get approved. Gosh, this was about a year ago that they've got that approved because they went on the ballot last year. Let me revisit that, but I, the process wasn't hard, it was getting approved, that was hard. I know, I can't remember their circumstances that they used either. But that's a good point. Prices are set now for next year, but you aren't necessarily building next year and starting to build next year. Next year's costs that are set for twenty-six, that will be the.
If this next step, that would always be open?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Beers, did you have another question?
No.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna bring it home.
All right.
Awesome. Thank you. Hi, any questions for me before I start? I'm going to talk a little bit about campaign guidance. And I know you saw my slides, I have a much, a fewer here and I want to just, I'm going to go through them really fast. Just want to make sure you understand some of the requirements, especially after the Auditor of State guidance that came out last year. It's not necessarily self-evident. So basically, the the guidance and and rules that are statutory rules govern what administrators, employees and school board members can do in terms of campaigning for the approval of the bond issue. Now, just to set the stage, the administrators have a harder time identifying when they are not working than board members. The, this all comes back to that public funds cannot be used to support or oppose a bond issue and so public funds include the use of facilities, somebody who's being paid. And for board members, generally, when you are being paid is when you are sitting in these meetings. So you have a much broader ability to campaign and I can provide this information because I'm trying not, for you to understand what the laws are. That's that's basically why why I'm here. We would recommend the most conservative approach and even though you are on your own time, when you're not sitting here, we would generally recommend that if if you are endorsing the bond issue or you are doing, if you're writing a letter to the editor, the editor, if you're doing anything, we wouldn't recommend that you use the title board member because that can also tie back to what you are being paid to do. You, in your own capacity, have much more broad authority. So I wanted to just sort of, that's, it's not always clear to people and wanted to just bring that. That's that's the general piece of information I wanted to provide. It's not working. So I'm going to mention just a couple of hot topics that we get lots of questions on. Please stop me if you have any, any questions. Communications, you can provide, the school district can provide communications about the bond issue and, but they have, the tricky part is what you can provide is neutral, verifiable, factual information. You need to write, communicate, oftentimes communications are written by your communications department who might not be used to writing research papers, which is basically what the information you can provide to the community is. And the community needs to understand that this is the all they can provide, which is why when you get a very sort of research paper sounding communication, you kind of wonder why is, why isn't it, why isn't the school board, why isn't the school informations like trying to be, you know, pro endorsing this this bond issue? Because they can't. That's, that's, that's basically what it comes down to. They cannot outwardly be persuasive. So they can provide information and your information can come right out of board documents, they can come out of any information you have on your, the study, the architects, you can provide information, anything there. But almost, you almost think about it as every sentence, it's like a research paper. Could I footnote this? Where did it come from? And it's not just saying, we encourage you to vote yes. It's, you know, that, that persuasiveness could say, we are replacing our old, you know, and and sort of using, using opinion words about the facilities that you have. It's, it's going back to elementary school fact versus opinion and you just can't use any words that somebody who might, that that somebody might view as being persuasive and your test for that is really somebody who, thinking about somebody who might oppose the bond issue and what would they think could be something persuading people to vote for it. And and it's a hard, it's a hard standard. You can put information on your website, you can put, send information home with students, you can use your, your email distribution list, you just have to be really careful. So we've got some do this, not, not that, you know, it's, it's not an editorialization. You also cannot, you cannot, and you can give any information if someone asks you for information, you can, the best way to do that is through a public records request, that you can have levy, levy committee members asking. So we would also recommend that you not allow the levy committee to have paid advertisements on, at the school board, at, you know, anything regarding the school. Can you do the next slide? Also, just like to mention, levy committee communications, the oftentimes the the folks who are going to run your campaign are going to be levy committee. It's important that those folks have some understanding of what these rules are as well because you don't want somebody trying to help the district and accidentally, you know, causing, causing problems. I had, I had, I live in a community that had a bond issue on the ballot just a year ago. I was a PTO president and it was shocking to me how often these issues came up of what what people could and couldn't do. The newsletters at the PTO has their little blurb. You couldn't have, you couldn't advertise a levy committee meeting in there because the, those communications were sent by the school district using school district time. It's also challenging because the levy committee doesn't have access to your distribution list, your email distribution list. So getting that, you know, being able to distribute to people is challenging, but that's, that's the case. So any communication with the levy committee, again, you can do that on your own time. We would, we would caution you, don't use your school email account, even though you transact all the rest of your school board business through your email account, this is a time where you need to use your private email account. Also had a situation in our own district where the levy committee took a very basic, a very basic video that the superintendent had done that sort of checked all these boxes and then posted it on their website and said, we're so glad to have the endorsement of our superintendent. And the superintendent, you know, that you assume would endorse, but the, you know, that was putting words into, into an administrator's mouth, which you can't do as well. So just wanted to sort of, it is helpful that the folks who run your levy committee have some information on what they can and can't do. School district resources, money, your, this inability to use public funds that extends to your, even, even your postage stamp meter. We wouldn't recommend that we allow, that you allow one group to use your, your bulk rate. I think the the main thing is that if you, if somebody, if, if the levy committee or anyone has a request to use, to use space, you can go on to the next one, you have to follow your business, your building procedures and use policies. And in general, you have, if there, if the, the preference is to just not allow any use, the levy committee hopefully could meet in a library rather than in your space. But if you're allowing any group to come and use your space, you'd have to allow an, a anti-levy group use your space as well. That's kind of the, the general, the general require, requirement. Use your school district email only for normal business and, and make sure that your staff and others know that these are rules as well. It's the same thing, teachers shouldn't be using their email to talk to the levy committee, although they can be participating in the levy committee on their own time. So I mentioned this, that you do have your own First Amendment rights and the, the challenge is when are you not working? That challenge is much more, much more sticky for administrators, superintendent, treasurer, who in theory, it's hard to define when, when you are not acting, when you don't have defined business hours. So, you know, the goal is again to let the levy committee do all the heavy lifting. Any members of the community can use your regular public records requests to get, to ask, request any information. Outside firms and surveys, the other thing to just make sure that you know is, there, years ago, there were a lot of PR firms that would have, have a little thing in their contract for your, their general work. If you sign this contract, we will help you pass your bond issue for no charge. That, you can't have, you know, provisions like that. No, vendors that you are paying cannot be required or encouraged to support your levy campaign. They can do it on their own accord and communications firms, you just can't be used to, to make persuasive material. Also, there are, there are, there are many times where schools like to survey their community. You've got to be really careful that the survey can in no way be, be considered something persuasive, especially if you, well, in any case, but especially if you're paying somebody to do it. And that's it. Do you have any questions? I know, I get, I, I, I gave this, I gave a much longer presentation. I think I had twenty-five questions. There's, because there's, it, it's not, it's not, the rules are not obvious.
So our board members, they're on the clock, when they're meeting in their meetings.
Yes.
Or finance committee, but not a finance committee meeting, or just.
It just depends how you're, are you, are they, they're paid just for attending board meetings. And and that means that at, at board meetings, you know, you, you can't come in here and say, I, I hope, you know, the, 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 being persuasive is, I hope all of you, you know, I hope all of you vote, go in home and vote for that. That's the kind of thing you don't want to, that you can't use your time in your board meeting to do. Make sense?
Does somebody else come into the board meeting? Who's the levy person and encourage everybody?
It, you have to follow the normal, the, you know, it's all about procedure. So if you, typically at the beginning of your meeting, you have public comment, if you, whatever your rules are, is it three minutes? You have, you have to sign in, whatever your rules are, anybody can use those, pro, anti, as long as they're, it's very open and it follows your general rules. Make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any, any last, any final questions for either Heather or me?
Thank you so much for coming and helping us with this and I know we've spent a lot of time together already, but we want to see kind of a.
So the Marchers are four point seven five, one hundred twenty-eight million, two hundred thousand.
Thirty-eight years.
And the purpose clause, or thirty-eight years and the purpose clause.
Right.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
The four point seven five.
Is that the interest rate?
That's the interest rate.
Interest rate, but that's the blended one, isn't it?
No, that's the, that's the public.
Oh, I thought the public market one was five point two four.
Not the millage rate, the interest rate.
Oh.
We don't have to determine the millage rate for the, for the resolution.
Okay.
That's the county auditor will send that to us later. That's, we just have to give them the interest rate.
Okay. And you think that the four seven five is a reasonable, conservative kind of number? Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Be careful driving back. All right.
Okay.
We have a couple of personnel matters.
Resolution three eighty-four is the certified substitute list for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second, any discussion?
Hold on one second, because, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Kathy was first, I second.
Okay.
Can you call a roll, please?
Just a minute. This is for what? For a librarian substitute?
This is a, it's just a sub, certified sub list.
Just a substitute. Just adding someone to the sub list in general. Okay.
Okay. Call a roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution three eighty-five is to approve a substitute administrator for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. This is an assistant principal at the high school.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm just going to tell you a little bit about it. We were fortunate enough to coax Michael Chafee out of retirement to come in and assume the assistant principalship of West Giaga High School while Carrie is out on her leave. And we were fortunate to get him. I say that because he comes to us, you probably knew him as the Newberry principal prior to the merger consolidation, I should say, to be more technically correct, I suppose, of Newberry with West Giaga. So Mr. Chafee was very respected there. I had the added advantage, after the consolidation occurred in twenty-twenty with West Giaga, he served as the principal of the elementary school in Cardinal Local Schools and two of my grandchildren were there. So I, I got to observe him for two years, acting in his role as principal. When we knew we needed someone to come in to fill in for this year, as Carrie leaves, we were fortunate to get him to come out of retirement. And I say fortunate because he has a longitudinal history and knowledge of not only the staff who came over from Newberry, some of whom are at the high school, but also the kids. So I guess the first day was filled with a lot of hugs and greetings from people who hadn't seen him for a few years. But he comes in as a seasoned administrator. He had, I think, twenty-eight years in the classroom. But he comes in as a seasoned administrator. He had, I think, 28 years in the classroom, and he has multiple years' experience as an administrator also. He's an ELA, former ELA teacher, which appealed to someone in our central office staff and to our board president, I'm assuming. But he also comes to us with a significant history as a, as a building-level administrator, and we're fortunate to have him here. So I know he'll be a good fit. He's here. He came Monday, and he started Monday because we needed him here to, we wanted him here for a week before Carrie leaves. But she's, she's gonna be out of here pretty soon from the looks of her.
So, and so this will be for the remaining of this school year?
Yes.
Call the roll, please. Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 386 is to approve classifieds, classified staff appointments for the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 387 is to accept classified staff resignation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution 388 is to approve an additional transportation route assignment for the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 389 is to authorize the award of service contracts for the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
We got gymnastics program yet?
We, have we what?
We have one.
Yeah, we have, we have offsite. No, we still have, we still have a small gymnastics program.
They don't practice here.
No, they're not here anymore.
Okay.
We have no equipment here.
That was my confusion, I guess.
No.
Call the roll, please. Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
And then we are going to be adjourning. Our next board meeting is a regular board meeting, Monday, December 16th, 2024, at 7:00 PM here in the Board Office Community Room. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Can I ask another question just before we adjourn? The, the deadlines that, that were shared were January 6th and the 12th or whatever. Those are just deadlines that we need to meet.
Those are filing deadlines.
That's not when we're gonna have, we're...
No, our votes, your votes will be on Monday, will be the necessity, and then January 13th will be your second.
Will be the next board meeting, okay.
We do have, we're splitting, I propose splitting the organizational and tax budget hearing for the January 6th meeting and then having our regular meeting on January 13th. So that would be two meetings in January. I sent that out.
Wait, there'll be two meetings in January?
In January.
Yeah, so the 13th is the first meeting in Jan...
No.
No.
January 6th would be the tax budget hearing and organization.
Yeah.
And then the regular meeting will be on the 13th.
Okay.
Where normally we do them back-to-back on the same night.
We do them back-to-back, but I felt, yeah.
This time, we're splitting them apart.
Yeah, just to give us time between our votes.
Okay, but we do have a meeting, there will be a meeting on the 6th of Jan.
6th and 13th. All right, motion.
Is there, so moved?
Yeah, second.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.